Senator Legel.
All right, thank you. All right, we have a whole bank of minutes to approve. Does anybody see any reason not to as a whole? And I will entertain a motion to approve the minute.
So.
I'll second it.
Your question, Shelley?
No, I was gonna second it, Joe was on.
All right, we do not have anybody online yet, so don't need to roll, so all in favor?
All right.
Any votes?
Oh, Jenny, hi.
Jenny.
Hello.
All right, so we will take a roll to approve the minutes. Jenny?
Oh, yes, sorry. Yes, for Jenny.
Thank you. Shelley?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, Alyssa, yes, thank you very much. All right, I do see that we have some administrators here and other members of the public, thank you. Do any of you want to speak at this moment? All right. Then we bring it right to our superintendent, let us know where we stand.
Good evening to the board. Potential viewers online, to our audience, everyone, happy Monday. You could. While you're spelling that up, I just want to say thank you all for participating. I've made it through my first deliberative session. Thank you. Definitely would like to thank the board for their collaboration. We must acknowledge Jamie and Lori. Jamie with Lori had a fifty point game. So thank you very much, it just shows what we can create when we collaborate like that, that was amazing.
And Jenny and the rest of the board answering questions, everybody did a great job.
It was a great, yeah, great job.
I do believe the public left with a good sense of where we were headed.
They might not like it, but we can't thank you enough for that.
And internally, I got a lot of correspondence from people just saying this was great, answered a lot of questions, so people were very happy and pleased with the presentation. So you have a great job, happy, made my job easier that night, I was like, yes. Okay, so our superintendent.
I'm Jay. Consulting every year to come do that.
Yeah, sure. From Arizona.
I'm putting that in the minutes, just so we're clear.
You know?
Do we need a motion? Do we need a motion?
Listen. Listen, listen, Linda. Lori will be great.
She will, now it's about time.
So like everything we do, we start with our mission and vision because this centers our work, so this is here to remind us of that. Again, our, this is the superintendent's corner, so this is where you can find the superintendent's brief, the school board presentations, all of that information is on the superintendent's corner. When superintendent's brief, we try to capture our work to get a sense of what our labor is for both for that particular month, the preceding month, but also what are things, like where are we going? So that's the way it serves to inform the public, where our major initiatives are. Our priorities for the remaining year, so we are still wanting to collect data for just critical aspects of our system, one of them being communication. We, there was a new app that was rolled out prior to my administration, was purchased, it rolled out this year, it's the app that you add, so we're going to monitor that. And we'll have a discussion at our admin retreat regarding its efficacy and whether that is the proper mode of communication for parents at the primary levels. And so we'll be looking at that and other forms of data as well. We are currently going to spend the rest of the year doing a evaluating our internal structures and our systems. Our departments will be evaluating the departments to determine the extent to which it functions efficiently. And how do we best support our teachers and faculty staff working in the buildings every day? So at each one of our meetings, we're looking at that, we're looking at the departments, asking ourselves serious, sometimes uncomfortable questions about the ways in which we function and looking for areas of innovation. So that's a major overhaul, but we're doing it each admin meeting, we're looking at that work. We have our technology upgrades, so we are moving to an online enrollment process. So our technology director is working on developing an implementation for that work, when it will be rolled out, how will we roll that? And so they're working to develop that timeline, however, she's also working to familiarize herself with the software to make sure that when it does roll out, we have the least amount of hiccups and it's the least disruptive. Again, tonight you'll hear about our, the curriculum update, so we're going to purchase curriculum core content areas. And again, the curriculum is about access, it's about ensuring that all of our students have the access to high quality, high quality rigorous content irrespective of the attendance area that they're in. So again, as we are getting more creative, you have more teachers coming in with SOEs or teachers that didn't go through traditional teacher preparation programs. We want to make sure that they have tools in order to educate the students, so it's not person dependent. It doesn't matter who's in that role, they will have the same body of work to then educate our students, which should make it a lot easier at the high school. We don't want to have disparities at the high school with kids coming from different attendance areas with different content knowledge and skills. If they're in the same system, they all should be exposed to the same expectations, and so that will definitely help us at the high school as well. We also have to update our emergency response plans, that's a big undertaking, we've got to update that, we're also going to create some for central office. To be honest, and districts have worked, and we were never really good at having a central office emergency response plan, but we need one and we recognize that we do need one. So that, we're to have, we're going to work to develop that. And then our administrative retreat, we picked out the days, we're going to spend three days together, some long hours, really working to develop our map for next year. So we spent this year collecting data, collecting information, we looked at student accountability data, that lesson plans, we looked at the curriculum. We looked at the instructional practices during the district walkthroughs. Now that we've collected that, that data, now we need to develop a plan forward to identify what we're going to prioritize for next year. So from a professional development standpoint, what are the things that we want to see our teachers doing and what tools do they need so that they can enact that work? And we also need to determine what is our goals, school by, each school should have instructional goals in regards to what's the achievement goal for this particular school? How are we going to move the needle? And so we'll be working to look deeply at that work, we'll have district goals, but we'll also have individual school goals, how we're going to move the needle and making sure that we're educating our students. So a lot of work, but it will be more operationally based because we are building the foundation for subsequent years. And now I'm going to turn this over to our curriculum instruction director. We recently attended the legislative conference, and so as we attend these conferences, we'll come back and turnkey any of the major legislative priorities for the year, any potential changes. I'll be a lot better too about going to these things, this year I really wanted to get, really bring myself within the community and the work, and I couldn't justify always leaving to go somewhere else when I know there's the houses on fire, so to speak. So. Yeah, so you know, I want to prioritize this, but now that we're going there, you'll start seeing more of these things as, as they come up. And I believe Kristen is online. Okay, perfect.
Everyone hear me?
Hi, Kristen.
Good evening, I apologize for not being there. So as Dr. Spence said, there's two legislative priorities that I'm going to highlight for you tonight, although there are a number of them that have been presented and are moving forward. One is moving through the Senate, Senate Bill one fifty-one, it's relative to mental health curriculum. And basically what this is going to do is lots of times the legislators will put in House bills or Senate bills that will expand the criteria for adequate public education. So for instance, financial literacy was something that we've gotten in the past, and so now they're adding mental health education. So as you can see on the screen, it gives New Hampshire Ed the authority to adopt rules for the provision of mental health, but it includes lots of different areas that would need to be addressed through a mental health curriculum. A lot of these areas are already being addressed through our health curriculum and also through our school counselors and the curriculum that they do for SEL. It also requires New Hampshire Ed to create a model curriculum that would be available to all of the districts and to make that available online. It also gives and extends some more parental rights to our parents and legal guardians or families. They already have some of these rights, but it is enumerating those a little bit more clearly in the law. Unfortunately, there is a fiscal impact, not only at the state level, but also for the local district. But that's not something that is, that we can make a determination of, and even when the legislators made the, or put the LSR forward, they even identified that this was not something that was determinable. Any questions on Senate Bill one fifty-one?
Quite a bit of that, right?
I'm sorry?
Same.
Sorry, I'm trying to think, I know that we're doing a lot of those different elements, so I'm trying to think what would be the change and impact part of this.
So it really depends on how this bill will move through, but it could require that we're doing more than what we currently are doing.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, I'm going to move on to the next one. So Senate Bill sixteen forty-three, this one is relative to making curriculum and instruction materials available on the district website. And what this requires is that teachers, it changes the definition of instruction materials, it also changes, or creates a definition for lesson plan. And so it amends RSA one eighty-nine by adding this whole new section. It would require that we put our instruction materials and lesson plans on the district website, available for anyone to be able to look at. That includes any teacher created materials, so or anything that they may use from teachers pay teachers, anything that they are handing out to students. It is a, it would be a huge undertaking for us to be able to do this and to be able to post this on our website. You have to keep it up for a full year beyond the current school year that you're in, and this is also something that they're not providing any funding for.
Yeah.
I was just going to ask, like, what's the likelihood of this passing, is it expected to?
So right now, right now it's moving through and, and it's getting some traction because of parents and families being able to see what's happening in the classrooms and being able to view that. So I'm not entirely sure how it's going to pass, but I am watching them pretty closely to see what's going on. So as these move forward, I will provide you additional updates to let you know what's happening.
Thank you. So Kristen, is this being brought up because of the whole hullabaloo about wanting to control, you know, content to the students with like, you know, not letting them read books that might have suggested content? Or, you know, all this stuff?
Yeah, so that's a great question, Jamie, and there are other bills that are also, that are also tied to that content or to that topic. And so I do believe that that is a piece of this, so being able to question anything that's being done within the classroom. So there are lots of bills that are expanding parental rights, but also opening up, you know, the avenues to be able to see what's happening within the classrooms.
So expanded censorship.
In some ways, yes, but also in other ways, you know, the ability for, for families to be able to understand and see what's happening within the classrooms.
Okay, that's the good part.
Yeah, I think it's timely that we're exploring curriculum. It's not, depending on the curriculum that the district purchases, it's not necessarily a bad thing. Some curriculums have, we call it scripted curriculums, where they have the lesson plans laid out. Would, if we purchased a curriculum such as that, we would then expect the teachers to look at that lesson plan and modify it in local, the local context based on student needs and the data. But it would be something that we would be able to purchase and then put on the district and say, this is the curriculum, with the understanding that there are some modifications. So it's, I've seen it in other systems where they have it posted, I think even here in New Hampshire, some districts have it posted, I've seen that, so it's not necessarily worse, it's, it depends on what product we have. Now at the high school, they're building their curriculum, they've already begun that work and are going to continue to do that, so, you know, how fast do we get it up? I'm not, we gotta investigate where we are in regards to that one. So it can be manageable depending on what product we get.
Yeah, it also, but it also requires every, like, in the areas that we do not have the purchasing of those curriculums, that they would have to, any handout that they give to students, any teacher created materials, all of that would need to be uploaded and available for viewing.
So that is sort of my question, are we preparing our teachers and staff to already have this in an available format? Should it pass and all of a sudden they have to have it ready to go, like, the organization of it is ready to hand off and be uploaded?
So I'm going to say yes and no. Yes, to the extent that one of the first things we did was we asked the teachers to submit lesson plans this year. What we now have to do is after having reviewed the lesson plans, we have to develop a template or some sort of format for the district to give the teachers the tools so that we can do that. So it's in the process of building that work, but if this was to happen tomorrow, the answer is no. So, but we have the, we're building towards that.
Okay, well, it makes me happy to hear that we're already building towards it, because I don't necessarily think it's a terrible thing, just that it's the time and expense that goes into it. And the likelihood that it is used extensively by the public is slim based on how unfortunate a matter of work.
What we would have to do is, one, we have to, so typically what happens is if it's not tested, it doesn't typically, it's not as much emphasis put on it, this is nationwide. So you'll see ELA in math, there's always a curriculum, you go to other systems, you might not see social studies or science if it's not tested. What that would mean is that we would have to, one, help lead our teachers in the work to develop a curriculum, have them meet in teams and develop it across grade levels and grade bands and make sure it's horizontally vertically aligned. Develop the product and then they would have to, if they were posted, but they would also have to monitor that. And usually what happens is, I've seen where the system I was before, we hired consultants from the university, they helped lead the teachers through that work and they developed it, but it's something that has to maintain, be maintained because it becomes a living and breathing document. But it, it's doable though, it's just in, depending on the timeframe, to what extent is it doable in that timeframe, that we will not know, but we're working towards this.
Excellent, well, I'm glad to hear that steps are already being taken. Seems like it's coming on whether we want it to this year or not.
Kristen, I'm going to go to the curriculum update, all right?
Okay, great. So the next piece that I wanted to talk to you about, and I've hyperlinked the curriculum materials review and purchase plan at the top for you so that you can see the details of our plan. I believe that I've given that to you in the, in the past, but highlights for K eight ELA curriculum team. So we've met twice so far, and we've reviewed the current curriculum materials that we have, what's currently being used, how well it's working within the district. So that is Hegarty, foundations and geodes. And then also some teacher created materials as well. We then also discussed data collection and for the needs assessment, so when we went out to talk to staff, what were the things that we wanted to be able to ask them for? And so identifying what member of the team was going to talk to each of the different stakeholder groups. At our last meeting, we started to review that input from staff on future curriculum needs and what they were looking for. And so our next meeting is scheduled for February twenty-seventh, and that's when we will start to dig into what our priorities are when we're reviewing curriculum and we'll start to review that curriculum. For the K eight math curriculum team, we've met once, we're scheduled to meet this week. We did the same thing with the math committee that we've done with the ELA, so we reviewed the current curriculum materials, which right now is really, for the most part, math in focus. A lot of our teachers have also, I've talked to you in the past about OGAAP training that we've done, that's the ongoing assessment project work that we've done in the district the last several summers, we've hosted trainings, but we've also sent teachers to other trainings. And so a lot of teachers are also using the OGAAP materials as well. We've also discussed the data collection for the needs assessment and then identified what team member would take what stakeholder group. So members were emailed after the meeting, they wanted to really kind of just dig in and get started. And so they were emailed a list of curriculum that Kevin and I, Kevin Hicks and I had already vetted and looked at what was on Ed Reports as being the most recent curriculum and what was meeting the priorities that we felt we needed initially. And then our next meeting will be on, I think it's Friday, and we'll review the input from staff on the future curriculum needs for that, but then we'll also discuss the priority areas and dig into the review of the curriculum that they've already done and will continue to do more.
You talked briefly about your, the teams themselves, what, how are they comprised generally across?
Yep, so. So we, so I asked an administrator, a principal to co-lead each of the curriculum teams so that if, for some reason, I wasn't able to be at the meeting, that that work could continue forward. So we're co-leading those teams and then meeting before and after each of the curriculum teams just to kind of identify, you know, where we need to go, is there anything that we need to change pace with? We then asked for there to be one K four rep and one five through eight rep on each of the different attendance areas. And then we are also having conversations with the high school for that vertical alignment up to the high school. There's also special ed representation on the committees and at the, at the ELA curriculum team, we also have reading specialists on that committee.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome. And Xandra Reagan is also sitting on that committee because she's helping to facilitate conversations with special educators.
I think this will help us move forward, again, two things, one, it's the access, and two, it's our ability to control for student achievement. So right now, right now as it stands, we don't know whether it's curriculum, whether it's the structured practices, whether students and the other needs, we have to be able to control for it. So by getting a curriculum that's rigorous, that's going to be responsive to student needs, it allows to be able to say, we have this document, we know it's online with the standards that students will be assessed on by the state. And then we can do it deeper dive in other areas, so this will be really good for our system.
Do you have a target decision date?
Uh, yeah, so if you look at the review and purchase plan, we've identified on the end of May, I'm sorry, the end of April as our decision date, knowing that we'd have a couple of weeks in, in May if we needed to push that and add a couple of other meetings. We've also identified all of the meetings for the remainder of the timeline.
We don't have the PowerPoint yet, I don't think, right?
No, yeah, I can send it to you then.
I can also resend you the review and purchase plan if you need me to.
We'll get the PowerPoint.
Thank you, Kristen.
You're welcome.
So we will now be hearing from our director of technology. I believe, is she with us remotely, Brennan?
Maybe we can come back to it.
All right, I can speak to that work, so I'm just a little blind and fonts faults. I'm like, all right, a lot, so a couple of things going on. One, there is the unified insights, and again, that's the academic dashboard, which will integrate all of the third party data. Reason why this is important, and I'm saying this just so the public understands the purchase, is that when we're asking teachers to use data to inform the instruction practices, we don't want teachers spending X amount of hours trying to pull data from all of these different, different places. They need to get the data in a, in a manner that's efficient so that they can use that data to then inform their instructor. So it's essentially like going to the doctor, they get your blood pressure, they get your vitals, and then they say, okay, based on this information, I believe you have this or you need this attention. So it's the same thing for us, so this is going to really warehouse all of that data, which will allow us to develop early interventions. Because if we can address any issues with student learning in their early ages, it becomes less expensive to remediate on the backend. So we want to really have our early intervention systems and build around that to make sure that we are focused on rigorous early elementary experiences, which will have greater gains in the, in the future. Lynn will develop, she has developed and will work on a timeline for implementing that and training teachers and so on and so forth, but that's, that's going to be another great addition in regards to the curriculum for us. The Power School Enrollment Express, Lynn is working again with a timeline to roll that out. It's going to allow our parents to utilize a barcode, sign up on it, do it from their phone, it'll help us immensely. There'll still be the paper option for parents who might not be technologically savvy at the point, but we also have people that can help bring them up to speed to help them fill out this application. So that will, that will, that will definitely, that's something that's working, we're excited about, that will roll out soon once we have the plan finalized. Part of the, the challenge or the, the work is, when we buy the program, we got to localize it, make sure it integrates with our systems. So that's where Lynn does the kind of back work, the stuff that I have no knowledge of training how to do it, but I know she's doing it. So she does that work to make sure it fits with our current systems. And then my favorite, there's the smart panel in Poly Studio. So we are going to be shortly one hundred percent Poly Studio Smart Boards, like the one that we're looking at in each classroom. From my office or any office, I'm going to be able to go on this thing and like, hey, Dr. Spence checked in, and it like simultaneously, all the boards around the school, this is the craziest thing I've ever seen, I'm so excited. I'm really excited for this, but we'll be able to, through audio and visual, like in real time, speak with people, like, hey, announcement, everyone stop. I hope y'all excited as excited as I am. I'm really, that's so cool.
So like the overhead announcements?
Yes, yes, and they'll be able to build, principals will be able to do that too, so it's like, hey, just put it, this is, yeah, I'm, I'm excited, yeah, so we're really excited about that. Another thing is our teachers, they do use the technology already. So sometimes it's a challenge when you implement the technology because sometimes teachers are resistant to that, but what I found here is they're using the technology. So I'm really excited about that, we're using it and it's going to allow us to become really creative. In the future, I'm thinking about in what ways can we get students to have maybe like a news show, things like that, that it can be broadcast, so we're going to use these to their full capacity, so I'm very excited about that. I wish Lynn was here because she can explain that better than I could.
So I have, I have a couple of questions.
Yeah.
One, I would pay good money to be on that video one day. Because I am sure that it will make my kids crawl underneath the table. That, you know, it's everything, however, and I may have to have a discussion with Lynn because, I guess as a parent, I'm very confused with the Power School to the rooms. The rooms has more detail, I can see assignments and we can send messages, I can also send messages in Power School. And maybe it's because we're in the middle of influx because some teachers do the rooms a lot, other teachers still do Power School, I get information from Power School that it can't from rooms. And I guess my biggest question is, how do those two tie together? Because it seems like we have repeated information.
Okay.
And maybe, like I said, maybe I need to just shoot Lynn an email. And, and have that discussion with her so she can, I'm sure within two and a half seconds, she'd be like, oh, this is what we're doing.
So first, let me acknowledge my limitations. That's part of leadership. The technology part, when that regular level, how they speak to each other, I'm not sure. Brendan, you might be better poised than that, not to put you in a spot. Do you understand that dynamic, how they're?
Do they talk to one another?
She would agree. But rooms is a separate than from Power School, the parent portal. But yeah, we, we absolutely could, yeah, meet and discuss it.
Yeah, I'll send Lynn an email because I love, I like Power School. I'm not, the rooms is still a little confusing to me and I still think that it's, there's still work to be done on it. I can see the benefit of it. Power School, I'm just more used to it. But this is where as a parent and as kind of out in the community. I went from class dojo to another class platform to Power School to rooms. And it just seems like we keep. Pick one, right? I'm not, I don't like dojo. I mean, I appreciate it and I think it was good for like younger grades. It's definitely not something that I could see being used. I like rooms for the high school. And for the middle school, I guess, but I'll talk to Lynn.
I don't even know what you're talking about.
That's a, that's a good point. So that goes back to our admin retreat. So when we have our admin retreat, we're going to sit down and look at the communication plan. From the lower grades all the way to high school to figure out what makes sense. After G, we're using it, it was purchased prior to me getting here. So we had to go through a full cycle to see like, to get that feedback that you're telling us, is it good, does it make sense? I've heard mixed reviews, so we're going to do a deep dive, look at the data and see what makes sense. If it doesn't make sense, then we will use to a, we will move to a platform not to purchase. But we've moved to a different platform that is more user friendly. So we're still gathering feedback, we're still going through the cycle, looking at the data. At the admin retreat, we'll, we'll leave that retreat with a communication plan to say, this is what you should expect in high school. This is what you should expect in middle school. This is what you should expect in the primary grades. But if you can still shoot a Lynn that email, so I can understand the truth.
I also hope that we're looking, since we spent such much infrastructure on these boards. As you're looking at curriculum, part of the matrix for looking at curriculum is inter, you know, resources that integrate with these boards all pre-made. I hope that's part of the process. Well, Kristen's still there, as you can imagine.
And we also want to use our tech leaders to help. These things can be used in so many different ways, they, and they have a pretty powerful machine. So we definitely put the purchase price, want to make sure that we're really using this to advance student learning. So this is all part of our admin retreat things we'll be talking about as we flesh out the work moving forward.
So if every school board member got one, we could just sit home and do it from.
I could find room for that.
All right, so I'll turn over to the business office. Lori still has a separate report, but she has part of her report is in my superintendent's report as well.
So, um, I just wanted to, um, yes, I wanted to hit transportation first.
How do you guys not know that? It's been all over Facebook for a week and a half now.
So this is going to be problematic for transporting our students to River Valley Tech Center. We are going to, Art and I will both be attending the select board meeting, uh, where the DOT will be making a presentation to the select board, Charles Town Select Board. My, my thought is that it's a presentation, it doesn't really matter what we say, it's not going to change anything. But we can at least stress the, the impact that this will have to school and to the students. Because this is, it's scheduled to be closed in April 2025. So that's going to affect us for approximately six weeks to the end of the school year. And then it's going to continue, it's projected to take eight months. So if they're on time, that takes us to probably Christmas. And that's a long time.
Didn't we?
Yeah, Jenny?
Didn't we have to deal with something, I mean, obviously you both aren't here, but something similar when they shut down 12, right?
Yeah, but they had a couple, they had a couple of different avenues that they could. Yeah, I think it was a couple, they had a couple of different routes that they could scoot around that.
This is either going up to Claremont and across, right?
Well, you're going to have to take that highway, you're going to have to get on the highway and come off that way. You wouldn't go all the way up to Claremont.
There's also Route 5.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, it's just across the road.
Can't go to Wallfall and cross because we overpass, we're probably too tall.
Yeah, you have to go down to Bell, like Bellows Falls, go across the bridge. And, and hook in there somewhere. I'm sure Art already has it and he's already on it. Yeah, he was on it the day it was posted.
Class time.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
So I agree with you, I'm not really sure that there is anything anybody is going to be able to say. That is going to stop this and, and I'm not even sure that I would want to stop it. Because eventually, if, if we do not do this, the bridge will not be there.
Right.
So however, I do think that hardships and all the information that is needed or should be shared. With New Hampshire DOT, just as we did when Route 12 was closed. And, and I would say that as the project gets closer, we continue to share those concerns. And when the project is going and, and if it decides that maybe they need more than eight months. Then we definitely make a little bit more noise about how it's impacting us as, as a community, because this is huge.
Yes.
So are we working now on curriculum to put in skinnies in place or something? Because it's going to impact the kids. Losing, they're going to lose at the high school level, yeah, they're going to lose probably, oh my God, an hour. And or another 40 minutes in travel time. So I would think that you'd be looking at, yeah, you might all be looking at your curriculum for your, for your kiddos that are going to vocation. Because you might have to do something like, you know, grab bags or.
It could, it could, is it, I mean to interrupt, is there also a possibility? That, um, some of the stuff that's offered in Springfield, could we go elsewhere for those eight months? I don't know where, but it might benefit us. If, if Keen is offering it, it might be something that, that if it's possible, that might be a go around. I don't know if it is, that's, that's, could do the first year that way, it couldn't be the second.
My, my, I guess, correct me if I'm wrong, but if it's offered in Keen, the kids are already going there. The students that are going to River Tech don't have the option to, for that programming at Keen or.
I, I would, I, I think Sarah would be a, a good person to have for this discussion. But you know, even if it's in Claremont, I mean, something other than that, that route around. But that's something, you know, that people can start thinking about now. If there's a workaround.
Okay.
But it has been closed before, it's been closed many times, many throughout my years. And we'll get through it, but New Hampshire DOT needs to understand how.
I was going to say, it has been my experience in the last couple of years, hearing all the things that are going on in Acworth and Elset with 123 and, and whatnot. They are listening to those hardship things, like they're not fixing 123, is it 123 or 123A? Until the summer because of the schools and that kind of thing. And so they are willing to listen, we just need to have a presence and I appreciate that you're going to be there. Corshelli will be there also hopefully advocating for us.
Yeah, maybe we could, maybe, maybe they could start it in June, stop it and start it back up. I don't know.
You know, there's many other things in terms of requesting an additional bridge be built. They do that in all sorts of places, like, but we don't know.
Well, look, they're going to build one right next to the brand new one in Bellows Falls, so who knows?
Right, and so we have options as long as we're advocating for ourselves and having the data that we need, so.
We call it dark.
Seeing you there.
I am excited to say that we, you'll see on the personnel schedule, I think later, that we are filling the dispatcher secretary position. So Art will have some support in the office. I guess the slightly unfortunate part to this is that it is taking one of our drivers to fill the position. But I, I think that in the long term, it will work out well. She'll continue to help out with the driving, is my understanding. And while we seek to fill those positions. So we still have two regular root vacancies and a spare driver that we're needing. Uh, so that's transportation. Um, and then I wanted to give an update on facilities. We have a break coming up that everyone's aware of, and usually the facilities department is quite busy during the breaks. And so this is just to give you an idea of what they're looking to accomplish during that week. Monday is a holiday, of course. But then Tuesday through Friday, they want to install many of the remaining 27 panels that need to be installed. We have round three of water testing that needs to be completed. I wanted to note that Acworth Villas and the high school will be done in June, all the other buildings will be done this week. There's an annual asbestos awareness class, that's a requirement, I do believe, uh, for our staff. Built to say, people are welcome to attend if they'd like to. I'm going to, I've never been, so I know asbestos and I thought it might be useful to, to attend this since it's being offered up and I know when it's happening. We have an elevator inspection to take care of, fire pump inspections. And then because we're short in our custodial staff. There are some sections of different schools that need some deep cleaning. So those are our projects for the facility department during the break. And then I wanted to point out that we have three custodian positions that are still open and a maintenance, maintenance position. Yes, Jane?
If you want, because we're using a company right now, we've, we've got probably nine custodial positions open and we're outsourcing. Which you can do if you've been, you know, advertising and you can't fill them. I mean, it's not against the CBA to, to temporarily, so I, I'm happy to share, we have two companies we're open.
So you're just outsourcing for those nine positions?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
I would appreciate.
And there's out of Massachusetts and they come all the way to Hanover, so I'm sure they'll come here. That's right on the way, they might just drop them off right on their way. The other thing I wanted to say was thank you very much for the financial update that you posted in the.
Oh.
Yeah.
You're welcome. We'll get to that one too. Okay, so that was my facilities, so now, okay, legislative update. Um, I tried to keep this brief and just hitting the highlights. So there are several bills that have been proposed that will affect the funding for public education. They're looking to increase adequacy base by per pupil. There's one bill that's looking to increase it to about the $10,000, which is based on the lawsuit that went, went on is credible. Because. I don't want to bore you with details, so using an input and output methods and using state. Experts as well as, you know, condo experts. Everybody's landing around $10,000, just within a few dollars. So that would make sense, but it's probably unlikely. But that was one of the bills. There's another bill that talks about increasing additional, the differential rate for the special education students. From, I believe it's 2,700 now to like 27,000. Again, it's unlikely that it'll happen, but there will be. Useful discussion and information that'll be shared going through this process. So. There is a bill that introduces a sliding scale for providing the adequacy aid and funding. So if your students aren't meeting or are proficient, then you wouldn't get the full amount. So. There is a bill that addresses some additional funding for building aid and different structures. Yeah, I, I don't, I actually didn't attend that discussion, so I'm not quite sure whether that was being passed through or not. There are several bills that address education freedom accounts. Some of them expand the definition of an eligible student and change income eligibility requirements. There are bills to address. Whether or not you have to meet an income eligibility requirement annually. Because right now you just do it, your first application, I meet the income eligibility and then you don't have to go back in. And apply again, there's, there's a minimal accountability there. Labor and retirement, there are some interesting bills here. One, which I think is going to be very positive, it was, they're proposing increasing the part-time employment, the number of hours that a retiree can work. And I think it's from like, isn't it about 1,300 now up to about 1,800?
That's awesome.
So it's a, it's a substantial amount, it's good. They're looking to, there's a proposal to change the structure, to add another group and change the structure. From a defined contribution plan to, from a defined benefit plan to a defined contribution plan. So that means there wouldn't be the mandatory 7% contribution from new hires that fall into that group three. It's if they choose to participate, they would participate. So that, that'll change things up a little bit. In conjunction with that, they also were looking at changing the vesting period to five years, reducing that. There's a bill out there that is suggesting that the state would contribute seven and a half percent for non-state employee groups. That's a start, zero to seven and a half is good, it's still a lot less than the 35% that they use to contribute. And then the most interesting, puzzling one to us, the group that we met with, was establishing a work week of 32 hours. And that that would be. Achieved through four eight-hour days. So nowhere in there is there any consideration whatsoever to a school year calendar. If we're days, I, I don't think we'd get any breaks if we have this type of law that we have to comply with. So I don't know how likely this was to pass through, but I can't imagine it would be. But that was, that was talked out there.
There are schools in the south that do boarding.
Yeah, but if we're, we're restricted, so the other, like, and it's three, the 306s, don't they require or maybe restrict the number of hours that the students can be in school? So it ranges, you know, like the young ones, a little under six hours, she's gone. But anyway, so there's, so there are restrictions within the guidelines as to how many hours of instruction time you can have in a day. So the eight-hour day wouldn't work for instruction. Right now, we'd still be restricted to a, a, a shorter day. So you'd have to have more days to.
You'd have to renew all your CBAs.
Yes.
Maybe we could get rid of either a February vacation or an April vacation. I don't recall ever having two when I was in school.
Anyway, so that's, that's what I have to share with you now and then.
Um, I just want to say that I really appreciate that you're bringing forward these bills that are concerning to school districts. Uh, in my short time here on the board, we haven't had this discussion. And I appreciate being given the heads up that this is what you guys are facing. So thank you for, for doing that.
Yes, you don't want to know all the rest of them.
There's a lot.
Yeah, the summaries of the ones that.
Oh, I know.
The center stuff were important, but. It's.
Completely wackaloney.
Yeah, there, I mean, there are several bills out there as well for cooperative schools.
Representative Splesbury's been very busy.
Yes, yes, indeed. Anyway, I was trying to, to focus on financial, so.
Appreciate that.
Maybe.
Oh, sorry.
Maybe you could scan that to us?
Oh, yeah, scan it and email it, just, I mean, I see it anyway because I get it, but I think it would be interesting that.
Well, and this is, this, we went to an NHSA conference on Friday morning. So these were, they, it was a different approach than I've been to, because I've been there for a while. But it was, they were trying to, to garner interest from, from the group as to where they should be placing their priorities. So, so each, they subdivided the bills and what they thought was significant. So this isn't even a.
No, it's not the complete list. Oh, it's not the complete list. I have a complete list I can share with them.
You should have me too. Yeah, that would be appreciated, Jane.
It's crazy. You're gonna read through them and go, oh, my god.
I feel like those come out in just bits and pieces.
Fall and spring.
Yeah.
And that NHSVA, but NHSA sends them often. I just got one recently and it was I I scanned it and I'm like, oh, my god. Okay.
It's a lot of information.
Oh, it's like overload, but it's it's good to, as a board member, it's nice to know that, you know, that you're having to be like, really? Like, you know, but it's nice because they put on there whether it's inexpedient to legislate or ought to pass or so it gives you an idea of where they think it's gonna end up.
Yeah, I do appreciate that. Charlie, did you have her? Yeah, no, because you wanna.
And so we'll turn it over to our human resource director to give us an update. So I've asked Bill, as he's here, to look at, to come into the system with the same critical eye that I had coming from a human resource perspective. And so he'll talk to us about some of his known things.
Great, thanks. Hello, everyone. Um so uh tomorrow is my three-month anniversary.
Yeah.
Completing it. Uh it's been a journey towards um conscious competence that I'll explain a little bit more when I mean about that in a minute. Um if you recall from my last update, there was some, I had a lot of anecdotal information and um I'm very interested in data-driven um HR. And so um I've done some of that in the past and I'm going to get started by doing that tonight to at least share with you some uh some information um that has some numbers behind it. So been um super focused on recruiting um and onboarding and trying to expedite, speed up those processes, make them more efficient, um follow-up relentlessly with people. Uh and I've gotten great cooperation from um from the principals who've been uh very active. Uh so we have uh nine and and perhaps ten new hires because um my friend Kevin has a pair that he's um in the process of recruiting ways for references on. So um we do have nine, three of those are pairs, so that would make four pair professionals we would have been able to hire since November first. Uh we've had good success with per de subs. We've had three of those. Um we have hired a custodian who worked out great as as well as a bus mechanic that we're really uh pleased with uh his performance. He's just been excellent. Um and as Lori mentioned, um we are very close to hiring um uh dispatcher, in fact, that sent her off the letter of information before we came tonight, so I expect that that uh that she will accept. Um we haven't had any declined offers um and and that was an objective of of mine as we as I began looking into some of our um rejections in uh in over over prior periods where we get really deep into the process, we start talking about money and we have people just kind of drop out and ghost us and and walk away. Um so we've accelerated that those conversations to make sure that we're we're spending um our time wisely when it comes to um recruiting and and uh and uh and trying to hire folks. Um we did have a couple of custodians um who withdrew as a function of having those conversations early. Um it's not a great thing, but um it is, I think I mentioned um at the last uh at our last meeting that the compensation levels for those folks are really problematic and I'm really happy to hear that. Um that I'm not happy to hear you have nine openings, because I'm very happy to hear that you've you've come up with a so a solution that at least fills that. So I'm very interested in that. Um we've also um processed ten volunteers and interns. Um and uh those volunteers have been, I think, very helpful, especially the interns we kept in Keene, because a couple of them are able to do so are able to sub um for the teachers that they're working for. So we've been able to get them effectively processed as per de subs and they're and both of them are working um and doing that now. Um we do have open positions and this is this is a place where I would like to have better data and I'm working towards trying to do that to make sure that everything we have posted on front lines that also ends up being posted on our website is accurate and current and reflects the fact that we have filled some of those positions. Um and so um the one position that I'm working hard with Sandra to kind of narrow down is the number of true um paraprofessional positions we have. And Sandra and I are meeting on Thursday um to do a deep dive on that. So um we I I'll have better data on that in the future when I'm more confident about the number of of open positions. But we do have, as as the slide says, we have a high school English and BSL teacher positions open. Paraprofessionals, we talked about the bus drivers and custodians. Um and then we've got some um spring coaching positions that are uh available right are that are um open right now. Turnover is at a minimum. We've only had one voluntary resignation over the course of the last. Um we have four scheduled uh retirements for June of twenty twenty-four that are um in the queue. Um and then we we processed quite a few FNL A leaves, pretty extensive um process to to make those happen, to get those done and the management. But um there's a little bit about the numbers, um at least over the course of the last several months. Um so I mentioned um the conscious competence journey and I I try, I look at um the sort of progress um that that you make in terms of any new endeavor that you um take on, learning a skill or or starting a new job. And so um you you al- you almost always start with unconscious incompetence because you really don't know what you don't know. Um and I've been through that stage. Um and I'm glad to be out of it. Um I'm I'm more consciously incompetent now, if that's positive, um because I do know what I don't know and I know um that I need to get to conscious competence as quickly as possible on the things that I don't know. So I'm somewhere in between, but I'm progressing towards conscious competence. And and the last stage is unconscious competence where it's kind of instinctive, right? Then you know how to do that skill that you've done for a long time because it's invented to do well. Um so the reason I mention that is that uh that in addition to having that as sort of the the process that you go through, in HR you have to go through a cycle, you have to go through an annual cycle because things happen routinely at cer- certain times over the course of the year. So I'm trying to get through those those processes, understand those processes, figure them out, assess them, figure out how to streamline those processes, that because that's going to be a really important part of being uh of informing the development of our HRIS system. Uh we talked about a couple of things that don't talk to each other. We don't have systems that talk to each other. We have apps um and platforms um that uh where we have to enter data uh and and that that doesn't communicate uh with each other. So we're replicating a lot of the data that we're entering in the system. So um that's the most important thing that I I have going on, that we have going on as an organization from an HR standpoint. Uh we did have a successful um flexible spending account onboarding that happened in December, which is that which was an exam- an example of needing to get consciously competent really fast because we were right in the middle of an open enrollment period that none of us really knew about at the time, but we got through it and we got we we were able to get um our staff who were interested in re-upping their flexible spending accounts, process this one, make some new folks as well. Um upcoming heavy lifts. Um so one of the things that we are behind on um is uh contracts for our late fall um hires, hires that happen during the transition period between uh between HR leads. Um we have gotten a lot of questions about that from um folks who don't have contracts. Those folks have been very patient with us and um once we get through these other two heavy lifts that are that are happening on March first, um which are the um the ten ninety-five C filings and I'm I'm sure you're familiar with those. We've got to get through those, those are our tax forms that confirm healthcare coverage for full-time employees over a twelve-month period. Um I've always been interested in getting those. You don't file them anywhere. They're just informational. Um and I've always taken it for granted that, okay, well, I'm just gonna put this in my tax file. There's nothing to do with it. Um and now I realize how much work has to go into developing those ten ninety-five Cs because it's got to be done by March first. And then the and then ten ninety-five, what's what's the form that goes to the government? It's not the C, but it's because it's a check, the form that goes to the government is a check on what you're communicating to your employees. Um so that happens a month later. So in any event, it's a super heavy lift. Um it's much more complicated than I ever expected. And then we got an OSHA annual um staff injury um survey that's got to be completed at exactly that same time. All of that to say, contracts are really important and we will get them done. Lori and I are meeting over the break um to develop a game plan to do that. So that's what's happening. Um you know, my North Star is rapid response. Um I try to respond as quickly as possible to everyone on everything, even if I don't have an answer at the moment and some people seem to appreciate that, so I'm gonna keep that up.
Jane, your question?
So back to, and I was just looking at the um support staff agreement because I haven't read it in years online here. Um back to the fact that some people got that far in and then walked. Is that because, is there still a um is there still a cap on how high somebody can be put on the steps here? Do you know?
There there's there are twelve steps.
Yeah, is there a cap at eight?
No.
There's no cap?
I don't think so.
Okay. I I couldn't find it, but it said that the maximum award on support staff is um two for associates, four for bachelors and two for masters. But it it didn't really speak. It says one to one. So, okay, so it's not because there's a cap.
No, it's not. It's because the range is, you know, starts too low and ends too low. That makes sense.
So, well, it's market driven.
Yeah.
So you're saying it's a market-driven issue that we're not um competitive.
Right. From what I've heard from my colleagues, we're falling a little bit behind. The our our best asset is sometimes our worst asset. So our greatest asset is that we have a lot of people that come back to our system that are from the area. But what's happening is a lot of those folks are aging and we're not seeing the same population that boom come into the system, which means to draw from a population, we're now drawing from other areas. So to justify the drive, to justify.
Right, yeah.
Superintendent's still looking for help. So, you know, these are some challenges.
Well, we were at a net, we were, the state of New Hampshire had more people leaving than they had been up again. So.
That exporter of that.
Yeah. So I I'm just looking at the wage schedules.
But to that, I'm gonna say this a little premature.
Yeah.
One of the things that we're doing is we're looking at a grow your own para. It's in our CT program.
Yeah.
Now I put it out there. I didn't want to tell you until later, but we're looking at that to see how we can sort of really grab these people and um just to circumvent them challenges. So part of that, which you mentioned, Bill, is really kind of the challenge that's been this year. So me coming into this just system is the same challenge. One, moving the system forward by having a vision of executing it, by still dealing with the work that needed to occur, plus closing out the work last year. So it's been some growing pains because we're kind of grabbing the system by the nose to pull it over the hill while we're still dealing with the day-to-day. So this why, this is why this year we're looking at efficiency. Bill's whole thing is where can we cut down the time and just what he's been able to do with the onboarding process to cut down that time will allow us to utilize why he's here, which is his ability to think. This is why, yes, this is it, Bill. This is why we're behind because the conceptual thing is where we have to be in order to grow and innovate. But we're done, we're dealing with the three newer aspects of the work, which is easy to get bogged down with. It becomes harder to innovate the system. So he's teasing us out and and when he goes to a cycle, we'll have some plans and like as we all are doing in our departments. Almost ready, it's time to shine.
Uh a few things that I'm working on now that I hope I can talk to you about next month. So this month, we'll we'll keep it nice and nice and short. Um so in I'm kind of looking at uh four different categories for my position. There's removing barriers for education, building partnerships, communications and events and that all of those have to do with community engagement. So in terms of removing barriers, I do have some some cool news for food access. Um over the last few months, we received some grants and donations for our food programs. So they feed the Nelson Church, to Rotary, a Rotary's matching donor, to Greater Things Ministries. And then we also just received last week another donation directly from N sixty-eight Hours of Hunger. So they um manage our administration, our bank account, and they deposited an extra twenty-five hundred to help support health. So um so that's helped us out a lot. And then we, in order to kind of continue to build those partnerships and give it back out again, um ten of our schools participated in the Super Bowl of caring. And so we had people bringing in cans or or donations. So uh results TVD, you have to go around and and weigh things and find out how much we've collected. So I look forward to telling you that. But that's a a national movement to um when the Super Bowl happens, then that's another day to to donate to your local food shelves. So and then our nearest food shelves would be the Charlestown, the Fall Mountain, and then uh Feeding Tiny Tummies. So though depending on the attendance area, that's who we're gonna get back to. Um and then we do have some upcoming events. February twenty-seventh, Lisa Langliss, our occupational therapist, is going to talk about sensory integration. On March twenty-sixth, Sarah Valley's going to talk about assistive technology and how really it's for all of us, we all use different types of assistive technology. And then we just put it a tentative date on the calendar for April thirtieth for the Activities Fair. We did it last year and was very successful. We'd like to also begin that during the school day so that uh the high schoolers can attend and find some activities they can do during the summer. So the goal of that event is to find out what there is to do around here, but also have opportunities for um to get connected to services. Uh and then I just want a quick comment about the other two events. When we were brainstorming topics, what to go with, kind of wanted to go with, we didn't have that when I was a kid. So explain, no, these aren't things that happened twenty years ago and why didn't they and why are we doing it now? So that's kind of where these topics are coming from, a little bit of uh evidence-based, a little bit of uh how they're effective in the classroom.
Yes. So are those two events, sensory integration and assistive technology, something that will be recorded? And the reason I ask is because what you just said is, you know, people are, you know, who might say, oh, I didn't have that back then. Why do we need it now?
Right.
It would be really cool to be able to post those on the local forums that people might then watch and get an understanding, whereas they would never hear it from the school district, but they, you know, perpetuate some of those conversations of it was good enough for me, why isn't it good enough now?
Right.
I'd love to be able to get that information out in other avenues.
I agree with you. I wonder if if a Zoom stream would work for that, or I'd rather do like um like bite-sized chunks, you know, the top ten tips. So maybe I'll work with some of the presenters to do that.
Yeah, that and your your times are not overly friendly sometimes. So um I was like, oh, I'd love to go to that sensory integration one.
Yeah.
Uh but I can't.
Okay.
So but if you had it online, I could watch it.
Perfect.
With my with my kiddo too. So um just some food for thought, like Alyssa was saying.
Thank you.
How long are they?
Yeah, these are gonna go like forty-five minutes of chat and then Q and A after.
So I don't think um personally, uh and and being somebody who doesn't have any children in the system, I would have no knowledge of it ahead of time, probably, you know, but to Alyssa's point, somebody on Facebook might say something about it and then you can reach a wider audience.
Right.
Um so I don't think taping a whole session is too long.
Okay. Excellent.
Throw it up on the website.
To post it, just like we do our YouTube videos of these meetings, they're easy to access.
I love it. Thank you.
Yeah.
I love what you're doing.
We'll definitely look at uh the ways we can leverage our technology to create greater access. I think there's a couple. I I envision this as being a series because the goal is really two things. It's one, it's access, but we want to make sure that the parents also have the tools to help the children. So when children come into the school system, some of that work is being front-loaded. So we're gonna get creative. The panels can do so much. I'm like, our technology department's amazing, so I'm excited, but yeah, we're gonna get creative with the technology. And and that concludes our our report.
I did have one thing to, if you went back to um your your portion and the first and the third. Oh, not that far back. So, yeah, right there. So there should be a really in-depth emergency response plan somewhere. There should be a really in-depth emergency response plan somewhere already done. For this district. So I'm curious. If you have that or don't have that. Because we spent a lot of time and effort doing that after the incident that occurred at Wollpool Middle School. And everybody in administration who was here was certified. So, so obviously things change, it has to be updated. But I'm hoping that, just in listening, I'm hoping people realize that we have emergency response plans. It's a matter of they have to be updated, you know, and think people thinking we don't have any.
Thank you for that.
And all of the schools have.
Yeah, the schools have their, our district wide emergency response plan needs to be updated.
Correct, yeah.
And then one developed the central office specifically. Like should there be a ma- major event at the central office? What are we doing? But yes, for viewing public, we, we have emergency response plans, but yes, we gotta update.
Very good.
Well, I appreciate all of those reports, is there anything any of you need from us this evening?
Yeah.
Time, money.
Yeah.
You got all that.
All right.
All right, well, thank you very much.
Can you open up the business financials? From the agenda?
Brendan, can you access? Let me share it with you. It's on the website, but I'll share it with you, it's pretty easier.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Oh, shoot, no, not that. I'm gonna share it, remember that's. All time. I also want to say at this time that I appreciate having this attached to the agenda. So that when it goes out to public and access it easily, this is all information that a lot of people have been asking for, so thank you for.
Yeah, nice.
Getting it right out there. Ignore the first one, Brendan.
So in, in pulling this together, I was trying, I brought back to you the deliberative session and what. What seemed to make the most sense as far as the format for running it. Because you know, often you can go with object codes or you go with the function code or whatever. So I wanted to focus on the service categories and that bit that we had in the deliberative session. Because that really ties into our, I think, our mission and value statements as to, you know, why are we here? What are we doing? So if that is agreeable with everyone, I will continue with this format. In breaking down the, it's, it's bi-functional, but it's like categorizing it by service. It's a business report, Brendan.
I think this is a great format, if we needed more information, we would just ask you in the meeting and get that information after.
Okay, I would like to get to the point as well where I have maybe a snapshot of revenues that would accompany this. Not quite there, so. Been a little preoccupied with the budget and trying to stay ahead of that discussion, so. So now, you know, with all of the turnover in the office and new people to education, everything, we need to. Start focusing some time and effort there and just making sure that we're. On the same page with how we're processing things and the timelines and what have you. So I had my, had my note column and I wanted to look at the occupational therapy services because I did not. The, the overdraft of something like that was very surprising to me. And so when I was researching this, I realized that. Just as I did with preparing the budget, I need to review this budget and actual to make sure that people are in the same buckets. And the numbers are all making sense and lighting properly. So I need to, between now and, and our next presentation in March. I hope to have gone through and like really analyze the positions and the budgets, just to make sure that everything's where they should be. And I think that that will help shake out the occupational therapy variance there.
Thank you.
I had some other buckets that I said I, I wanted to look at because I thought that we needed to have some monies encumbered. I think that over the last three years with the changes in people within the, the position and the office. That there have been some controls that perhaps have gone sideways and so. It's not a consistent practice within the district to encumber, fully encumber line items at the beginning of the year. I've been preaching, but I haven't had an opportunity to, you know, really sit and teach and, and specifically identify. So an example is when I was looking at board services. I have like. Four or five. Purchase orders for audit fees. And I should have one that all of these invoices are hitting, so. But we haven't encumbered the full amount for the audit, so I need to go, I need to walk through that process. Individually with our caspable person and, and people that. And the bookkeepers in the buildings that are, are generating these purchase orders and, and encumbrances. Because we're in the habit of encumbering based on an invoice. So for another example is our E energy lease agreements in facilities. We don't have the full year encumbered, well, we know we're gonna be spending that, we should be encumbering that full year. My diesel costs for bus and transportation. I might not use it all, I don't, not sure how we budgeted and versus where we're at with actual costs. But it would be my best practice to encumber the full amount for the year. So we know that, that those funds are spoken for and those expenditures are spoken for. Then, you know, at the end of the year, if we don't use it all, we get it, it's no biggie.
But I appreciate that, it gives us the ability to look at it and, and plan and.
Right, so, so right now we're looking at, you know, we're seeing a two point six million. Well, we don't have revenues in here to offset that, in factor in. And I've, I've already personally identified things that aren't covered that should be. So that two point six million isn't anything that I would say, well, let's have a start having discussions about what, how we're spending it at the end of the year. My goal is to, by next meeting, be able to start having those types of discussions.
Fantastic.
Question?
Yes.
So as you get, which is great, right? Because we all know that, yeah, you need to fully encumber, see, clear a picture, which is awesome. When you get to that point and you feel comfortable with the snapshot. Because everybody else understands, when we look at that, that's a snapshot in time, it changes daily, hourly, you know, I mean.
Even though I'm running it as of January thirty-first. Something's been unencumbered or.
Correct, there are changes. And so my question would be for the next one out, if you feel like you are in a good place with having things encumbered. I'd be interested to know how much of that, how much of this, and I like the category, you know, the categorization. Because I think we, then we're following through that all the way through everything. But I would like to know within those lines, how much of it's discretionary that's remaining? And when I say that, Lori, I think you understand what I'm saying, but I'm gonna verbalize it for everybody else. So within the lines, once you get there, if you just run a one hundred and two hundred. Right, and just focus on, those are non-discretionary lines. So anything remaining in the ones and two hundreds, which are salaries and benefits. You can usually say with some certainty by the time you get to March. That money's probably gonna be pretty much available. Because even if you fill all those positions, or some of it's not, the fact that most of it's probably open position, but some of it could be turnover. Right, savings and or costing more, either way. But I think that's a relevant piece that we could actually maybe in the March meeting start planning a little bit about. What it looks like and what's there. So thank you.
So along those lines. I always categorize supplies as discretionary.
Yep.
My repairs and maintenance, those are discretionary, I mean, like inspection fees, those are not, those should be fully encumbered. But, you know, we have a budget and. Most, so within my past experience, then typically the budget's pretty sound and it's, it's an average of what you need every year. And for the most part, it's used up, you know, the snow cloud bidding and, and snow removal, that can go either way. But it's a, an agreement that you have, so I like to fully encumber those. And then again, we start getting towards the end of March, you can start releasing, maybe. Or at least wait for your March bills to come through and then you can start releasing and then, okay, well, we had more expense in, in this building for this type of facility. Occurrence, and so then, you know, you can start moving, you can start covering those overages like that.
Yeah.
Ken?
Do you have a degree of confidence in the available bounds for instructional services? Since those are mostly people, right?
Well, that would also include, it, it's not going to be just people, it would be the, the supplies and contracted services that also support the instructional. So that's something that I would be able to better speak to.
Next time.
That's why you, you, that, to your point, that's why when you're looking at it. You, like discretionary to me is anything three hundred up, okay? I assume that's gonna get spent out when I'm doing an early projection. But the one hundreds and two hundreds, those are not discretionary, they, by the time you get to March or April. You should know that you're really sitting on that much money. You know, whereas you're gonna release, show release incumbences as you get, like end of April, depending on when you cut everybody off, right? And that's the other thing that they'll learn a lesson, right?
Yes.
You better cover it now, because I'm cutting it off and you're not gonna put any more in, yeah.
But to your point and your question, while those functions are instructional. Every one of these line items has. Our one and two hundreds are our salaries and wages and, and there's the, you know, the contracted services and repairs and maintenance. And, you know, each, each function has that group of objects built within it. So I mean, and, and again, I'm not married to anything here, I do have some questions for you.
Okay, yeah, just email me.
There, there's a nice little feature in the system that I've never been able to successfully utilize.
I love that you use your resources. You're very lucky.
I don't know that I've used it, but I'm now curious. Because if I haven't, I know a guru that knows the system inside and out, we can talk.
Okay, all right. I realized that there was something that I forgot to mention earlier in my presentation and she said, we need to have, during the budget process. This, I think I talked about how some, you know, revenues, I think it was at the budget hearing, the revenue's in excess of five thousand. If it's not budgeted for, you need to have a public hearing to approve. We have three different categories that during the budget process, I realized were not identified within the budget. And going forward, not next year, but the year after, we will resolve that. We need to, and, and in these. The first one is, is E-rate and it's a competitive. Grant, as you will, I think that's the easiest way to explain it, in which you, it's an application that you submit to the federal government. For specific technology pieces and components. And so it's a, it's a bid process that goes out and there are deadlines and forms that you have to complete and. We were awarded forty-two thousand eight hundred and thirty-seven dollars as well as cents that we were receiving this year. We've actually received it historically, what has happened. When you put this out to bid, you're already identifying how you're going to use the money and that's your, it's awarded to you based on that use. So we need to use the money for that, but I need to, I need the public hearing so then you can have, make a board decision to accept it and appropriate it. What has happened historically, at least in the last three years or so, is that. This has been netted against the expense. So we're actually buying forty-two thousand dollars, almost forty-three thousand dollars more in technology than we included on the budget. So for the fiscal year twenty-six budget, I'll have my grossed up expenses and a grossed up revenue. So the revenue would be shown in the revenue side and so then we wouldn't have to go through this process. But we need to do that this year and next year. We have another piece.
Just a question on that, isn't there, and I could be totally wrong. So, but I would double check on this, because it's a federal grant, it's federal grant, E-rate's federal grant, right?
Yeah, shouldn't it be included in the special revenues?
Right, but because it's a federal grant, I don't think you have to vote on those every single year. I think if this district took us a vote to accept federal grant monies. Then you don't have to do the individual voting, but the districts have to, and I'm pretty sure we took that vote, Lori.
No, I know what you're trying to.
You know what I'm saying? So then I think it just falls to whatever the district's policy is. And, and the RSA in New Hampshire just went up, but, but we should look at our policy. Because if our policy's low, we wanna raise it, so you don't have to keep going through that.
Okay, oh, yeah, we have to ten thousand.
Yeah, check on that E-rate thing, because I think that still falls under federal.
It is federal.
Okay, and, and you might not have to do that because we took that vote as a district.
Okay, all right. So another item was the fresh fruits and vegetable program. And so I'm not confident that that's been factored into our food funds that are showing in the special revenues. And special, like the other fund line, the two million, it gets added to the general budget. So this year, we were awarded fifty-nine thousand seven hundred and five dollars. For fresh fruits and vegetable programming across our schools, our elementary schools. So I'd like to include that too on our, our public hearing. And then during COVID, there have been a series of supplying, supply chain assistance grants. That have been issued from the USDA. And basically, we, you know, if we had disruption in service or being able to buy supplies or, you know, what, what have you, we're getting money. So we were just awarded thirty-three thousand four hundred and eighty-three dollars and seventy cents. So. Like to request that we have a public hearing before our March meeting, at the start of our March meeting, so we can accept this.
Again, call Jamie down, she'll know if we took that, she'll know if you need to do that or not.
Okay.
Or if we took, if we, I think we voted the appropriate thing, so you don't have to go through all that.
For any of these?
No.
They're all federal.
They're all federal, it's, it's usually, it's. I, I can't remember what the votes called, but it's usually unanticipated monies that come in that aren't of a grant nature, right? So like a donation, like if somebody says, I'm gonna give you a hundred grand for whatever, buying a bus. That you definitely have to have public hearings.
I'm just not familiar with the federal exception.
I think there's, I think we voted that and not all districts do, because they wanna look at it on an individual basis.
So can you look into that and let us know by the workshop meeting? Because I'm going to schedule to do it at the head of the first meeting in March if we need to. My only question is, can it be taken as one lump sum or do we have to do three separate hearings?
I think it can be a single hearing if we need to hold one, but we would need to address each item separately, because there are, there are different categories.
And just accept them separately in one hearing, okay.
I don't think I had any for this.
Okay. Go back to the agenda.
All right, at this time, Patrick, we would love to hear from you.
Oh, yeah, all right.
Thank you for sitting through all of that.
So overall, academics have been slow recently because of the change in semester. One problem that I have been hearing from students is the class sizes for some classes. As with the loss of teachers and some faculty in certain places, some classes are made bigger than what they used to be. But other than that, most people are pretty fine, are fine with what they're doing in their classes and I know that with athletics. Our basketball team and our cross country team for boys elite basketball have been seeing some pretty good success overall. I'm pretty sure the boys basketball team is set to make, is set to make playoffs and their senior night was pretty wild. Not many concerns from students, mainly the, the loss of teachers over the year, over the past couple of years. Size of the classes and lack of diversity in classes is the main focus of the concerns that I've been getting from fellow students. And just hoping that will keep the diversity that we've had. Looking forward to mostly February break is the main focus for everybody. Um, looking forward to uh mostly February break is the main focus for everybody. Um, but eh everybody's looking forward to starting the break, but also getting farther into school year, false, I mean, spring sports are coming up. Um, but and finally with uh recent events, the eh we recently had all the schools and districts come through and you'd be given tours from uh eighth graders. And that seemed to go pretty well and they seem to have a good time with it. So, yeah, overall, pretty good.
All right, sounds like it is going smooth sailing. Thank you very much for that report. Enjoy your vacation.
Could we get a report on the principal, because the semester has changed of class sizes of high school?
Big moments I heard, there's like now for student classes, like thirty or thirty or something students in it. It's like or either close to or at thirty students in that original class.
Yeah, so we need to visit our class size policy as well, right? Or make sure that people are aware of what they did. And maybe on that list, an idea of what classes weren't able to run.
Classes that weren't able to run.
Because he say, the young man is saying lack of diversity of classes. Is that because we were sh- short-handed and couldn't hold some of them? They had to be canceled?
Of course offerings.
Yeah, course offerings, I'm sorry, thank you.
Yeah, I'll provide an update. I'm just taking it.
Definitely big concerns.
Everywhere, yeah.
All right, does anybody have any other questions for Patrick?
No, but I'm happy to hear that you would like a diversity of course offering. That's good to hear. You don't normally hear that.
So does anybody have anything on the consent agenda that they would like to remove?
I want to talk about the calendar.
Her concerns are probably not the same as mine, but maybe they are. But I need to talk about them. At least talk it, get it out. You know, verbalize it.
Everyone good with personnel and the overnight request? Jenny, do you have anything you want to add? Good.
Motion to accept the consent agenda minus the draft.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Jenny?
I agree.
Yes, yes, thank you very much. All right, so the floor is yours.
Me first?
Sure.
So I I'm sure it's gonna be a big fat no, but uh this whole starting on August twenty-seven is a massively huge pet peeve to me and probably ninety-nine percent of the population. It does not make any sense, at least for me in my world and many people around me, to have those kids go to school for a couple of days and then they break on the following Monday. So I understand we're gonna do a hundred and eighty days. I understand like all the Xs and stuff, but if we could work on that, that'd be great. At some point. Without going into July.
So you're right, mine doesn't agree with yours, but that's okay.
I think it didn't, but if people, so the majority of what people talk to me about at the beginning of the school year in the summer and at the beginning of the year is why we start before Labor Day and what is the point in going for four days? And blah, 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 blah. That is, that is probably the biggest discussion I have as a school board representative. Which on many levels is probably somewhat sad, but that's the reality of it. So when I see.
Says we're doing something in a really good way. That's people's biggest.
Can I, so question, because I don't remember. What is ER?
Early release.
Okay, so those are considered half-days?
Yeah.
Okay, do we get full credit for that? Yeah, we did. Okay, because you go into lunchtime. Okay, so, um uh, I get why we start early like that because it's the thought was that it's a soft landing coming back into school and then it gives them a little break in between when brings them back in. Um, also, people really get nasty when you go into the middle of Ju- when you go into the last week of June. Um, they get really ugly. So my question is opposite of Shelley's. My question is, how much, how bad do you think our attendance is gonna look? Coming back for two days after the first? Oh, January. And I don't know where to, because there's no snow days built into this, right? And are the early release days, why do we do so many?
Professional development. So there's two things to this. We have the court, the state is cracking down on our coordination with Keen and um the NAGPA, that regional CTE agreement. So we had to move some things around just because of we, I'm not saying too much, we have to work on how we are working that out because right now we are following another system and
Yeah, you're lining the Springfield like the rest of us on the Connecticut Valley.
We're on a, we get off from Keen first. Yeah, Keen kind of drives our calendar.
Okay.
So we.
Have to have all, you could only have so many days that differ. And this is pretty well aligned to Keen's.
Right, but it, but it's not aligned to the other side of our district, which is Claremont. So then you get, then you, then you, that's why the majority of people that I've I have discussions with is that Claremont will start later and they get out earlier. And everybody's like, why is that possible? And I'm like, I don't know. It has to do with.
If they might have an hours calendar and that that makes the difference. That's why.
Or they have less ERs because their CVA is different, the collective bargaining agreement is probably different, has less days in it.
If you're, if you're days, if you're on a days calendar, you have to have a hundred and eighty school days. Otherwise, you're hours.
Listen, I'm I'm just telling you what people, I know, grab me at the grocery store about, yeah.
And correct me if I'm wrong, but we did have that conversation with the CTE centers and they are not on an hours-based calendar, which is challenging for us.
There are a hundred and eighty days.
Yeah. I know it's not what you want to hear, Shelley, but it's just.
But you don't have, your school doesn't have to be in session. It's not, there's no law requirement that you have to be in session every day that vocational laws in session. As long as you're providing transportation for students to that center while they're open.
My understanding is you can't have a variance of days past so many. You can't, you can't have that many different, I'm not saying it, I'm not saying.
Don't we have students coming to us? So if they're open, we should be open.
Oh, that's probably the reason, because you've got some coming this way. I see, I didn't think about that. Yeah, Lori, you're right.
I think it's twelve days that we.
I can tell people, listen, I tried.
And the superintendent was not budgeting, so. He's like, listen, no, 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 no.
I'm gonna give you one, we gotta get ahead of the um, when we have to get on the same page as to when they're developing their calendar in Keen. We just, this was this, so I'm not trying to say too much, but you know, we have to align ourselves with superintendents so that we're not following Keen's calendar, that we all are like developing this in concert. So we got the calendar and then we're kind of tied to it. But we're looking to get better and in regards to hours, I gotta do some research in that. I've got mixed reviews from superintendents, so I gotta, I need more attention to look at that, fully to see if it's gonna be, make the most sense here.
Call mine.
Okay, are you doing hours?
We do both. We do whatever's best for us at that point in time, depending on how many snow days there. You can do that. You can build a hun-
June?
Yeah, yes, you can build a hundred and eighty-day calendar and then as long as you've met your hours threshold. We do early release on Wednesdays. We leave it too. Everybody leaves it too. So because you have to count the amount of hours. As long as you have the right amount of hours, you can adjust.
And there's, there must be data out there that says this is educationally sound. The kids are getting as much.
Call and ask him. I I don't think it's because we're a unicorn.
I don't even want to know. It's been too late.
We have to input our calendar with the Department of Ed, either hours-based or days-based at the beginning of the school year. I've never looked into changing it, but that's how, we have to let them know ahead of time how we're operating. And go by that, but I've been.
Like, maybe I'm wrong because I don't oversee this, but I know that we have.
I'm telling you that eh every year since there was a change in commissioner. We, every district I've been in has been able to evaluate. How many snow days did we have that we need to go hours or?
And then you email.
With that change, you know, you could not do that.
Okay, so it might be worth a phone call to a couple of suits. Let's see what's going on.
That would just be good information, I think, to have for the March, the first meeting in March, just because if we need to be able to pivot for this year, we can.
So far, we're, we have two days to make up. We we don't know.
It's been pretty good.
Do you know how, do you know the anxiety I feel?
So just to let you know.
I did hear.
That that this year is not a normal occurrence.
Well, last year didn't start to go downhill about now, March. February fourteenth.
Or March third, we did last year.
I make a motion to accept the calendar for what says. Well, it was on the consent. I've pulled it off, so. So I had, I had my answer.
Jenny? Yes. The calendar is accepted. Thank you, but I appreciate the conversation.
Oh, no, because this is recorded, so I can just point people at this. I'd be like, we had the conversation, you can hear it for yourself.
Some solutions to that problem because it is, you know, definitely a concern for a lot of people, so, yes.
Well, at least you don't have everybody coming to ask you for all the religious holidays off.
No, we are not there yet.
Oh, my God.
All right, so the next um item on our agenda can take a long time or can take a little time. However, what is feeling? Um, uh, debrief of the deliberative session. I know we started out this meeting with a little bit of a discussion about um how appreciative uh we are and how appreciative the public is of how the deliberative went. Does anybody have anything else that they'd like to add or discuss? Yes.
Very quick question, very quick recommendation or suggestion? Misty?
Yeah.
We have maybe more than a foot distance between us next year. And I don't know how to do that, but it's really crampy and I was sweating two rows and the poor people beside me. I mean, it just, two rows with the risers.
Tall tables and stools for the banquet.
No, but they're, they, we have risers. They do choral concerts.
With table, I mean, are you, are they large enough to put?
I think so. I think they're that deep, aren't they?
We have a year to fix.
We've done it.
Yeah, we'll look at it.
We've done two rows before. Yeah, I think it was, I think it was fine when it was just the school board, but you throw that budget committee in there and all of a sudden.
We can't do risers, we might be able to re, like, kind of, yeah.
I think that's how it was when we, the year that we took the vote to um dissolve the budget committee, they were set up like.
Yeah, you can, you can put.
They have the pull-down screen that year. Yeah.
Yeah, we'll work on it. Yes, thank you.
I'm, no, I, I wasn't trying to complain, but I'm just like, I think I'm gonna pass out. It's hot. I can't move. Sarah's, you know, chewing on a, on a uh Hershey kiss and I'm like, I can hear it. This is, this is very bad. For like four or five hours, like. Yeah.
Um, I would also like to send a huge shout out to technology. I did not have one single person tell me they couldn't hear either online or internal or the main thing. Um, and people did utilize both the podium microphone as well as in the audience, the mobile. And so everybody from uh maintenance who helped move those around, I'm really grateful. It was smooth as silk.
And the video, the video of the deliberative was, is perfect. Yeah, it's good. It's good. They did a really great job. I do, yeah, yeah. Well, because I'm so focused on everything that's going on around me that I don't always get the full effect of the meetings, so I re-watch it.
If you re-watched it, did Spilsbury actually ask a question in his three minutes or does it, to me, it was just me, me, this?
So, so, um, apparently, and I learned this and I didn't know that, that right, you don't answer a statement. And so, um, I didn't re, I never knew that. So I I have to say, we need to do a shout out and a thank you to Leroy, who knows the rules very well. So, yeah, you you, people have a right to just make a statement. You don't have to answer it. So, um, but that was, it was good to know. Learned something there. So, anyway. Board retreat?
Yes, uh, board retreat. We need to set a date. I don't know, is there too much will be changing? If we had anybody indicate that they were going to run a
Writing.
Writing campaign for you all hold seat.
Yeah, they're gonna write in Jenny's name.
Yeah, I I'll be interested.
Oh, I'll write it in.
Co-coerced boardmanship, I like it.
We don't, we don't mind if you have to miss meetings. It's okay.
Well, that's good because I I have a sick one on my lap right here.
You could zoom every meeting if you wanted to decide to re-contemplate that. What month are we looking at?
Um, are we looking for the end of March?
End of March? Didn't we meet in the summer?
Yeah, yeah, no.
Why are we meeting in the cold?
Oh, because.
Can't be outside in the cold.
No, I'm looking for a place with a fireplace that we can just, you know, sit and.
No, we're going, we're gonna go sledding.
March, it's either the eighth or the ninth or the twenty-second and twenty-third is what I can do.
That's outdoor pit.
Um, we do need to have some serious conversations about strategic planning.
Yes.
Um, about the, the methods, about looking at hiring um consultants to help us through that strategic plan. So it's a really important time for us to meet in the spring more, so it's a, an extra meeting instead of just our annual retreat in the summer.
Oh, we're having an annual retreat in the summer?
Yeah.
This is the first of two.
The first of, well, it's the second of two for this FY. And then the other will go back.
There's the, what is voting on? So it makes more sense to do the twenty-third, right? You have a new board.
Supposed to be at a I thought tourism and transportation expo in Montreal on the twenty-third.
Did you want to do a different additional day or were you gonna try to put it onto uh one of our regular days?
No, it would be a a longer, like we did in the summer.
I love chicken salad. Let's do it. So we're looking for a Saturday in March.
I don't have my calendar.
Are you looking, I'm just asking or?
I can do the ninth too. I mean, most of them will be the same, so I'll like it.
But did you say the ninth?
You said the ninth, right?
I can either do the ninth or the twenty-third. Hold on.
But I know that we're not available.
But I know that twenty-third, I'm not available.
Or April, I could do the twentieth, I think we should, six or the twentieth.
When is Easter?
Thirty-first.
Okay, so it doesn't go, uh, the sixth works.
Six won't work at conference.
Okay.
The what, April?
Yeah, April.
To do it sooner rather than later?
Before the vote.
Yeah, well, most of us can be the same anyway, it's not.
Right. Are you running a post?
On a post.
On a post, yeah, we're all on a post. And then Jenny can give us her wealth of knowledge before she leaves. We're gonna talk you into staying.
I'm gonna find you on some babysitters.
We're all writing you in.
I'll find some babysitters, and I promise I'll do it.
Oh, good, I've already started making a list.
You could just zoom, it's okay.
Yes, for sure.
Absolutely, we're not, you know, all right, the ninth, we don't take attendance.
The ninth of March?
Uh, is that what we're doing?
That work for you?
We didn't, we didn't want April.
April, April, I can do the sixth.
You have a fireplace in April.
And I will be away in April.
I like the idea of getting going, I know um earlier at the agenda sitting meeting, Kevin and I were really interested in getting this, you know, really moving, so we could have some.
Just pick it up.
So, I, the ninth it is.
All right, you good with that, Jenny? For March ninth? And I'll work on our location?
Yes, please.
Can we make it semi-local?
What about the place?
Yes. Hmm?
There was a place we went once.
Let's go to the potato ball.
Every. Why not?
Isn't there like a conference room?
Like Lainmore, I think they made a apartment.
You know, they still have it.
Your living room.
Yeah, right, hey, come on in.
What about asking the owner, they have a, they do have a room up there.
They've been using it.
No, no, but the inn, there's a room up at the inn that's out on the porch.
Yes.
Walken Tavern.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
We've used that.
The inn, we've met there before.
Yeah, I can work on that.
At the inn in the back?
Yes, yes.
You're talking about Walken Tavern at Hooper, right?
I know.
And she's talking about Bellows Wallpole.
Yeah, we're talking about the Bellows Wallpole.
I don't know if they're still allowing, I don't, I don't think they're open anymore.
Oh, really, he's, look, okay, where are we going?
The Bellows Wallpole, and I'm pretty sure.
We're going to golf course?
They've never been, open in the winter?
Yes, they are.
They are?
Yeah, they have a whole tavern in there now.
Oh, my.
I wouldn't have a fire.
Been away for a while, I guess. I love the Hooper, I've never been there, but it looks beautiful.
Okay, I live right next to it, so it works out for me.
Me too, Jenny. All right, that sounds like it's going to work out.
Do we have a non-public?
Yes, Joe, does that work for you?
Um, not the non-public, no, but uh.
We have seven minutes if we're gonna be truthful to ourselves, remain faithful to our commitment to one another.
To accept, yeah.
Make a motion to accept the charge of report.
Second.
Jenny?
Yes.
Yes, yes.
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 Yes. All right, fantastic, are there any, whoops, I remember, can anybody who wants to make a, an acting report tonight in person? All right, thank you all very much.
Kevin's like, I'm.
Kevin, Kevin was going two and a half hours ago, but he decided now not to.
All right, so then um I will entertain a motion to move into non-public for de-contracts.
Move, move.
Second.
Thank you, Jenny. Shelley? Jenny?
Yes.
Joe?
Yeah. Yes.
Thank you, Patrick. All right.